Call the meeting order, please. Call the roll.
Ms. Cuhun?
What?
Ms. Cuhun?
Here.
Ms. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Ms. O'Neal? Dr. McFadden? Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Here.
Of course, then, status. Next on the agenda, the flag of the regions.
The regions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda are citizens comments. This is a portion of the meeting where you can address the board any of your questions, comments, or concerns. I ask that you come to the microphone, state your name and address. Also be mindful that you have three minutes to make your inquiries. You may not receive a response to your particular inquiries here this evening. Last but not least, I ask that you address all questions, comments, concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens comments.
Hello, my name is Mary Campbell. My address is 53794 Arabian Trail. And until last Friday, I was a Mount Clemens employee. Between attending school here and teaching here for almost thirty-three years, I have spent forty-six years being a part of Mount Clemens before making the difficult decision to leave. During the years that I've been here, I've experienced many highs and lows. The highs, of course, included the many families and staff that I have had the pleasure to meet. I want to share a few of the lows because I want to stress that for thirty-three years I was a dedicated employee who considered Mount Clemens my home. The lows most recently included me standing before you in October and carrying so much that I had cried and begged for help. I want to share with you that Mr. Lavender has done his due diligence, making sure that my classroom had the support that was needed. However, for many of you who I had an experience with for many, many years, I would have expected a reach out from the school board also. Another low included the time that I stood on the stage at the small auditorium and asked your teachers and ancillary staff to take eleven unpaid days that we creatively called furlough days. The time that I sat at a table with Mr. Rickman and others listening to the Department of Treasury in Lansing talk about our future as a district. I can't forget the many school board workshops at the ISD, listening to similar discussions. However, at all of these meetings where I heard options as to what could happen to our district due to a deficit, a decline in enrollment, or any of the other scenarios that were spoken about, I was confident that Mount Clemens would value their staff and that the school board would make sure that they would do the right thing. However, that hasn't happened. The main catalyst for my decision to leave Mount Clemens was how the district handled the movement of the Pohei program late last summer. I know that last spring, the district asked the ISD to put plans into motion to have the program moved. I understand why the program was moved. I want to make sure that is clear. What I don't understand is why the staff wasn't informed of the decision in a timely manner. The Pohei staff is forced to scramble to find positions. Some did, and some didn't. Some remain in Mount Clemens, but not all in the same role that they had when Pohei was here. Mount Clemens did not take care of their employees, and I was worried and no longer confident that they would in the future. However, the inequities with the hiring practices here, especially in the special education department, are inexcusable. Paying a full-time virtual speech pathologist who doesn't have to be at work ten minutes before or after school, who doesn't have two evening obligations each semester is plain wrong. The caseload is low, and the planning time is high, and all of this is happening when our students are not being serviced. Virtual speech for a student in early childhood special education is not right. It's not sound practice, and it's not educationally appropriate. I know we have a number of staff in positions where they are not certified, some with college degrees and some without. I know that this is the same in many districts across the state. But you, as a school board, have an obligation to our students and their families to make sure they are being educated. Believe me when I say all school districts have their own history and their own problems. District staff, their families, and their communities will always have their highs and their lows together. But I fear we have faced challenges that other districts have not. Obviously, we have had a number of teachers leave Mount Clemens. Not only seasoned teachers and administrators, but also new teachers. I'm not sure if you actually have heard how many teachers have left within the last year. Mount Clemens has lost twenty-five teachers in the last year, and that is almost half their staff.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
My name is Linda Conti. I live at 39915 East River Court, Clinetownship, Michigan. I am a retired Mount Clemens teacher, and I am currently a long-term sub at King Academy. And I would like to give my time back over to Mary Campbell.
Thank you. I was always surprised when teachers left, and I was told it wasn't about money. But now I understand. Yes, we are one of the lowest-paid districts in the county, but the seasoned teachers who left, and although I believe that some left because of job security issues, but others left because they loved this district, and it is hard to be here right now. My number-one reason for leaving Mount Clemens is my students and their families. I have worked for thirty-three years in Mount Clemens, and I was not given the professional courtesy of a visit from our superintendent to wish me well. Mr. Lavender came and thanked me for my service, and I appreciated the well wishes he gave me. I hope my resignation caused you to ponder, I hope my thoughts tonight caused you to ponder, why I made this difficult decision. If you wish to reach out to me, please do so. But I want to end my lengthy statement by saying I wish Mount Clemens well, and once a bather, always a bather. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Agenda's still open for citizens comments.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Pastor Andre Fullwood. 37140 Bryant Ford Drive, Clinetownship, Michigan. I am employed at Seminole Academy. In a recent notice that I received from Mr. David Lavender indicating that my contract would not be renewed for the 2023-24 school year, and this happened on March 29th, and I did email on April 3rd all the board members. Due to budgetary cuts and decline in enrollment were cited as reasons for my nonrenewal. Although at the beginning of the school year, in September, we had three hundred and ninety-four, and now we have three hundred and eighty-four, so I'm trying to see where is the declimate, plus the fact that we have Seminole, I mean, we have King coming over, which is a hundred-plus students. Nevertheless, if the school district is budget-cutting, how has it filed funds to hire two separate law firms, Collins &amp; Blauha, PC, and Paul Scott &amp; Associates, to fight against Mrs. Bethel, a district employee? With the integration of students from King School that will occur in the fall, Seminole's student population will increase by one hundred students. Cutting my position as a behavior specialist seems ill-timed. Furthermore, Seminole has not been fully staffed this school year. We just received a counselor a couple of weeks ago, and continue to operate without a social worker because she's covering the whole district and not our particular building, and we're still down one security guard. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. The agenda's still open for citizens comments.
Diane Jackson, 615 Wellington Crescent, Mount Clemens, Michigan. I'd like to share a little background information about myself and my husband, Nelson Jackson. I retired from the district, a proud educator, in 2011 after serving thirty-seven wonderful years. I taught second through eighth grade, science, math, ELA, computer, science, and reading. I'm a certified middle cities trainer. I trained all the teachers in the district in corporate learning, certified REED-180 instructor, instructor and consultant for the pre-college at the University of Whitewater. Pass MCEA, fielding rep. Since retiring, we have served as volunteers in twelve public schools, South Lake Public Schools, and recently in Mount Clemens Public Schools at Seminole Academy. I had Ms. Walker's daughter as a student, Earl's sisters as coworkers, and his brother as a student, McFadden, you were in Edison, and Ms. O'Neal, memory fails me, but I had you. If I didn't have you, I had family members. My husband, Nelson Jackson, served thirty-six wonderful years in the district as an unbusman, Title IX and VII Compliance Officer, elementary, middle, and high school principal, and also a consultant in Lansing Public Schools for K through twelve principals. Now, we both were recently awarded in February the Educational Impact Award for 2023. You're probably wondering, why is she standing up here tooting her horn? Well, the reason is, while volunteering at Seminole Academy, we sat in two professional learning community meetings. During those meetings, the topics of discussions were the upcoming field trips, the need for volunteer testing proctors, and activities. There were no mention at any time of any students or classroom issues. We were given a message within a day or two from the Seminole principal, the superintendent Bills said we are not allowed to attend any more PLC meetings. Why on earth would two retired educators from the district be banned from attending a professional learning community meeting? Is that the things you get as retired educators and taxpayers who are willing to volunteer their service to the school district? School board policy, volunteers, this is your policy manual, section 3000, professional staff. It says, "The Board of Education recognized that certain programs and activities can be enhanced through the use of volunteers who have particular knowledge or skills that would be helpful to members of the professional staff responsible for the conduct of those programs and activities." I guess that doesn't include us. This is simply scandalous, unspeakable. Superintendent Bills, you should be ashamed that perhaps you put us in the same basket as the other minority administrators you have gotten rid of and are presently working on, the third minority administrator. Your record speaks for itself, and the board, you are in the lower end.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Catherine Wilmore-Matt. I grew up at 65 Deal Drive. My mom built that house in 1968. She educated all of her girls. I now live at 80 Meadle Street. After going off to college in Ann Arbor, I retired five years ago, but then I got bored. And they said there was a need at Seminole Academy for lunch ladies. I raised my hand. I said, "I'll commit to two days a week." Two days a week. Now I am in charge of the lunchroom. I love those children at Seminole Academy. I love Mrs. Bethel. She's doing a phenomenal job. Mr. Lucas was doing a phenomenal job. I couldn't understand where he went. And the woman before Mr. Lucas was doing an outstanding job. I've always believed that where there's consistency, there is improvement. If you don't give a person an opportunity to, number one, give them the guidelines and the stipulations of what you're expecting from them. I was in advertising at Campbell E. Walt. We had reviews every six months. This is what I'm expecting of you, and this is where, if you want that ten percent raise, I'm expecting you to hit all these target marks. I think it's unfair. How can you expect a person? We want our children's test scores to go up, but, and they have targets that they have to meet. We want their, we want Mount Clemens to be uplifted. Right now, in Macomb County, no one wants to send their children here. But there is a lot of love and concern, parents, citizens, educators, retirees, and the lunchroom, we're all sixty and over. We love on those children every day. If Jim is not the highlight of their school, lunch is. Because if Johnny is sitting in a corner crying, we're gonna take the time off to take off our gloves and go over there and sit with him. It may only take one minute, but we will do that because we have a passion for the students of this district. My husband is a videographer. He retired forty-five years at Chrysler Skilled Trades. Whenever I ask him to help me with an issue at Seminole Academy, he's there. I'll bring something home, and I'll say, "I need you to configure this," because we have to wheel the lunch carts down to each room. And sometimes the wheels aren't cooperating, but he'll do it. So this community cares about these students. I kind of went off a little bit, but, um, the morning announcements, I'm a praying woman. I start each day with my husband at home in prayer. The morning announcements, I just love. We don't, we don't get to children involved in prayer, so don't misunderstand. We separate prayer and school. We understand that law. But what I am saying is, for us, it sets the, ourselves, amongst us, the teachers who want to, at 8:15, 8:20 in the morning, we pray because we want the Lord to guide us in what we are going to face during that day. We know who our troubled students are.
Ma'am, thank you for your comments. Your time is up.
My three minutes is up.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Second call, citizens comments.
My name is Von Dale Carter. Mount Clemens alumni class of 1991. My address is 65 Rathbone. Brother Fullwood mentioned that budget cuts were necessitating position cuts. He also mentioned attorney's fees. Are those attorney fees on public record? Is there some public disclosure that we citizens can see what the district is paying for attorney's fees for the two law firms that we mentioned?
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Nelson Jackson, 615 Wellington Crescent. I have a document here. It's a document of separation that says that 2023, February 23rd, Board of Education, and it's for this Bethel, this piece of garbage that I have in my hand, it's a draft, but Ms. Bethel presented a letter, a letter of demand on the ninth of February, and this was produced on the 23rd of February, which asked her to resign. So this board, after she gave that letter of demand, crafted this nonsense, a seven-page letter, which she did not sign because she's done nothing wrong. There's nothing in her personnel file that says she's incompetent or anything of that nature. So, the community needs to know what's going on, and I'll share this with some of these people that are here. This is ridiculous. The last thing I want to say is that I want to know why David Lavender gave a letter of resignation to Ms. Bethel that was addressed to the superintendent, her sister-in-law. What is an HR person doing giving a letter of resignation to a staff person because it was besmirching her reputation? That's why it was done. And it's my understanding that his hat is in the ring to be a superintendent of this district. One other thing, there's something called recall, and since this board sits there and looks at us, and you look at us, and you never respond, and it's under the leadership of Earl Rickman, you're a board president.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Good evening. My name is Crystal Combs White. I live at 29182 Sharon Lane, Chesterfield, Michigan, 48051. I worked for this district for twenty-six years, and I was one of the people, in particular black people, that were, that had benefits taken away, that had sick days taken away, that were not allowed to accumulate longevity in this district. And I just feel like, why is it that everybody that looks like me, who has the same skin tone as me, has a story to tell about how they left this district? Why have we seen superintendent and central office administrators come here, double-dip, make two-hundred-and-fifty thousand or more, collect pensions, collect their salary here? And I can name person after person that cleaned up toilets, that served children in the cafeteria, that sat at those desks and worked the offices, mine subs, that looked like me, that looked like me, who lost it all while you were the president, Mr. Rickman. Why is it that alumni that are working all over the world, second lieutenants, producers, principals, everywhere else but here, that look like me? Why is that? This almost looks like an apartheid school. And I don't say that to disparage anybody that doesn't look like me. You can ride down Gretchen, see other people playing out in the playground, and see the kids here. Macomb County has decided that this is a minority school for children, but not for staff. And every bad story we hear involves somebody that looks like me. I can name Bill McKinney Serenalls. I can even name all the people that died of cancer or some other chronic disease because they lost benefits while they were cleaning up and sweeping and answering phones. There's a history here, and maybe instead of a board meeting, we need a community meeting with all the people that look like me that had to leave here for foolishness. I'm sick of hearing about it.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Ebony Carter. I am also alumni of Mount Clemens Community Schools Class of 91, but I'm also a former employee. I live at 65 Rathbone Street in Mount Clemens. I did not come with intentions to speak, but I have to be obedient. And the one thing that I do want to say is, I'm always honored because when I left here, moved to Tennessee, and came back, my community reached out to me. They knew I was an educator here. They also knew that I was certified as an administrator. I honored my community because they called and they asked, when the position was open, could you apply? I applied. That's when they hired Mr. Gibson. I was grateful because my point during the whole interview was, this school needed male leadership. To know what happened to him, but then later down the line, still always keeping that opportunity open to maybe one day come back, and to know that prior to me resigning from my position of administrator in my current district, which is Chippewa, that I was also tapped on the shoulder again to consider being a principal of Seminole. And to sit here and to hear what's happening, this is the fear. We are still family people, many of us that have the qualifications, still live here, want to give back, concerned about how educators are being treated in our own backyard. I don't claim to have the answer, but I do know this. This is not looking well. There will be no way that we can convince any educator, from a cafeteria worker on up to a superintendent, to be committed to making the decision to come to this district and work, especially if you are a minority, understanding how things are being done, and to not receive information to validate the decisions that are being made. This is unacceptable. I'm aware of how other districts work, and I'm sad to say that unfortunately, how we're doing our educators in this district, it doesn't compare into what others people do. So I'm begging you to do better.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
Good evening. Roxanne Brown, 590 Clinton River Drive. There's an adage that goes that an organization is only as good as its head or its leader, and I think that applies to the school district, school boards, that a school district is only as strong or as weak as its leadership. And I think I speak for the entire community of Mount Clemens when I say that we take the superintendent's position very seriously. Because that is the lifeblood, the person who is in charge of making administrative decisions at the top is a very vital role. I found out about the scheduled interviews for the finalists for the superintendent's position from a colleague of mine at Seminole. I'm a substitute teacher there on occasion, who just happened to be reading an email, and somewhere buried in the email, it said that community participation in coming out for the interviews is encouraged. My question to you all tonight is, how is it encouraged if you don't have any kind of a banner on your website that indicates when the interviews are going to be held? How is it encouraged if there's nothing flying around on social media? And I see a lot of photo ops on social media with people taking photographs of little black children at schools, but I didn't see anything. How is it encouraged if you don't reach out to community stakeholders, organizations like churches, and let them know that the interviews are being scheduled? We want your feedback. You can come down to the space. You don't have to do it from a streaming position. You can be there live to see how we're approaching the process with the candidates. I mean, I don't think it's been encouraged at all. I think that we're not really supposed to pay attention here. We're not really supposed to be involved in helping to shape and select leadership for this school district. We're supposed to just be blind and stay asleep and let somebody decide who is going to be the superintendent based on their greedy, clamoring, manipulative tactics to get the position. And I just think that's egregious, that you say it's open to us and the community can, you know, as stakeholders and parents and students even, be a part of the process, yet you don't do anything to get the word out. And this is not the first time this has happened. I'm gonna wrap up. It happened with the surveying of community people about what they want in a superintendent. It happened with the stakeholders' meetings that were held at all of the schools, but there was no publicity, there was no awareness made. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Last call, citizens comments.
Patricia Hammond, Clinton River Drive, Mount Clemens, Michigan, 48043. I have a recommendation for the administrative response to the residents regarding, well, I should say, the lack of administration response to the residents on the questions that we've asked. In the city commission meetings, on the agenda item, we have administration response to issues or questions raised during previous meetings. I am recommending that the school board adopt this. I have a copy here for all to see, and hopefully we can get some administrative response in the next meeting.
Thank you for your comments.
Gary Isby, Mock Avenue, 15678. I have a few questions. Why hasn't David Lavender been disqualified from pursuing the superintendent position when there are serious pending complaints against him with the Office of Civil Rights, the EEOC, and the NAACP? As important as a public position as superintendent, you would expect that the candidate's resume with redacted information would have been available to the general public. What are you hiding? Lastly, short of filing the request with the Freedom of Information Act office, how can senators obtain information on the public school district's budgetary process as well as the proposed budget for the next academic year? Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Hello, my name is Lovely Polk. Address 13371 Nerf Side Drive. How important is it to the board of Mount Clemens Community that the next superintendent has a has a PhD in an education discipline along with the requisite central office certifications required of school superintendents in growing school districts across Michigan? And also, I've watched quite a few of these meetings and I've been hearing about how people of color have been getting discriminated against for a while, and I haven't heard any praise reports since then. So, yeah, I would like to know what's going to be done about that. And that'll be all.
Thank you. Ms. Lernbeck, does anybody want to zone?
No, sir.
Moving the agenda forward. Next on the agenda, we have board recognitions. We will start with students, but before we begin with the student recognition, I would like for Ms. Carlin Trailer to stand up and step forward, please. The Mount Clemens Dance and Cheer Team was re-implemented during the 2022-23 school year under the direction and leadership of Coach Carlin Trailer. Coach Trailer and her team have generated excitement and positivity through our school community, through their performances at games, at our schools, and even at Detroit Pistons games. Their TikToks have gone viral. The Mount Clemens Dance and Cheer Team continue to strengthen the community's perception of the extracurricular activities that our students hear in the Mount Clemens Community School District. In recognition of your dedication, commitment, and leadership as the coach of the Mount Clemens Dance and Cheer Team, we say thank you, Ms. Carlin, for your positive representation of the Mount Clemens Community Schools. And I would like for you to introduce the members of the Cheer and Dance Team because we have certificates. The certificate reads, and it has, the certificate reads, "The Mount Clemens Community School District in recognition," and it has the student's name, "Your dedication, commitment, and leadership as a member of the Mount Clemens Community, Mount Clemens Secondary Complex Dance and Cheer Team. We would like to thank you for being such a positive representative of the Mount Clemens Community School District, presented April 19, 2023." So, we do the honor of introducing your team.
We have like fifteen students who are not here, but first of all. We just want to say thank you for acknowledging us. We have been excited about the new program and just ecstatic about what the girls have been able to do. And we also want to thank our assistant who started with us this year. She was my assistant, and that is Mrs. Z, as we call her. If she could stand. So we have a captain, Anaya Redding. Trinity Peterson. Mia Carter. Shania Williams. Jaleah Steele, Nora Spooner. Geneva Bailey. Lamia Johnson Baker. Destiny Horton. Nora Young. Bria Etheridge. Azelia Wallace. Adriana Crampton. Janiah Potts. Corinne McKay. Another captain, Chanel Plant. Autumn Sanders. Mariah Johnson. Serenity Miles. Amari Powell. Lenazia Fletcher. Sheraya Johnson. Diana Shaw. Shantone Gardner Sanders. And that is everyone. And again, thank you so much. And our captain just wants to say one thing.
I want to say thank you for all that you have done for this team when we needed you the most. You guys really put out and helped us to achieve it. I had a last minute ask Ms. T to coach for us, and she took the leap of faith to do that. And I just wanted to say thank you for all of your support.
Ms. Trailer, could you and the team stand up here in front so you can all be on the camera?
Yes.
So you have a competition coming up, right? May? Do you have a competition coming up? A performance at May 5th, right? Why don't we say something about that, too? Maybe we can go. Thank you. Can you let us know about the performance? At Eastwood, right? At Eastwood? You don't have one? Okay. That's how I heard. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Trailer, and to the Dance Cheer Team. Mr. Lavender, I'd like you to step forward and present the staff recognition, sir.
Is the podium okay?
Sure, sure.
This evening, we would like to give recognition to the Seminole Academy Equity Team. The purpose of the Equity Team at Seminole Academy is to enhance the culture of Seminole in ways that are more equitable and inclusive. The Equity Team believes that their students will be more engaged and motivated to learn when they feel a stronger sense of belonging and personal agency at school. The Equity Team wants to build a deeper well of self-confidence and pride in each of our students by placing a greater focus on the strengths and potential of every student as an individual. To that end, this team engages in the following actions. Multiple meetings throughout the year where they investigate issues of equity. They collaborate to create solutions that bring about equity. They speak openly about equity issues within the school community during staff meetings, school improvement meetings, professional learning communities, in order to raise the awareness of the entire staff regarding the equitable treatment of our students in all situations. They support and defend equitable practices that are proposed and implemented to ensure that students benefit from their efforts. And they participate in planning and carrying out projects and programs that build up our students' sense of competence, self-worth, agency, and ability, and their feeling of belonging and pride in our school. In recognition of your dedication and leadership as a member and contributor to the Seminole Academy Equity Team, we would like to thank you for being such positive representatives of Mount Clemens Community Schools. I'd like to give recognition to Terry Garing, our literacy coach. Please come on up. Deborah Dickinson, behavior coach. Gabriella DiPaola, fifth grade teacher. Leah Fowler, fourth grade teacher. Andre Fullwood, behavior interventionist. Jennifer Jones, special education teacher. Stephanie Kanya, paraprofessional. Karen Minor, second grade teacher. Tabitha Roundtree, fourth grade teacher. And Principal Dia Bethel.
I would like to respectfully decline that basic teness of this award does not align with the day-to-day experience that we are having.
Thank you to our Seminole Academy Equity Team.
Congratulations, and thank you to the Seminole Academy Equity, those that participate in that program. Next on the agenda, item six on the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda this evening, item six A approval, minutes one, March 15, 2023, regular meeting. Two, April 13, 2023, committee of the whole work session. Item six B, approval of bills for payment. Item six C, new hire, one high school social studies teacher. The chair would entertain a motion relative to the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Seconded by Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor regarding the consent agenda? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Kahoon? Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Item seven, student discipline, Madam Superintendent.
Mrs. McNeely, we have a student discipline that's for a high school student? No, I'm sorry, a middle school student. Hold on, would you come to the podium, please? I think that our dance team is.
So sorry, yes, it's a middle school student, and there's been a request for closed session.
The chair would entertain a motion to go in, excuse me, to go in closed session for the purpose of a student disciplinary hearing. Moved by Member McFadden.
Support.
Seconded, Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion to go into closed session for the purpose of student disciplinary hearing? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Kahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. We're going to a closed session. We'll be back out of closed session to complete the remainder of the agenda. It's been moved by Member McFadden to come out of executive session.
Support.
Seconded, Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns? Call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Kahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mark, Ms. O'Neill is absent?
No, she's not absent. She's trying to get in.
Okay. Ms. O'Neill?
Come in!
Come in!
Ms. O'Neill?
Come in!
I'm sorry, Monique was keeping me. She was, you know.
Would you like to return from executive, or closed session?
She said yes.
She said yes, okay. Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Meeting is out of executive session at 8:23. Back in normal, regular session. The chair would entertain disposition regarding the student discipline of student 2815.
Mr. President, I move to accept the recommendation for student 2815 from administration.
And that's the motion.
The motion is suspension for the rest of the school year.
Been moved by Dr. McFadden.
Seconded.
Seconded by Member Kahoon to accept the recommendation of the administration for suspension of student 2815 for the remainder of the 22-23 school year. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Kahoon?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next on the agenda, item eight, business and finance. A, playground. B, Seminole Elementary School renovations, architectural and engineering services proposal. Madam Superintendent.
So, tonight, we are bringing for the board the approval of the playground at Seminole for our GSRP students, that new playground piece, and then the renovations that have been recommended by Partners in Architecture for us to begin getting bids on and to complete during this school year, hopefully mostly this summer. There's pictures, you've seen everything.
Is this an action item or is this just an update?
It's an action item. We need to get this going so that we can get this playground bid and built.
Chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item eight. A, playground.
So moved.
Moved by Member Collins.
Support.
Seconded, Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? The playground is a combination of two or three various grants, I think. Is that the one that's involving the Christopher Reeves Foundation? And then some other grants?
Right, also through GSRP.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Kahoon?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Item eight B, Seminole Elementary School renovations, architectural and engineering services proposal.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. McFadden.
Support.
Seconded, Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Kahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Item nine, policy committee. A, policies for first reading. Dr. McFadden?
Yes, as everybody received in their packet, we have about 10 policies that we're looking at revision. Just wording, most of them is pronouns, but there are some that we added some information to. Policy, I'm gonna pull it up real quick. I will speak a little louder since my microphone went up. That means I'm not talking loud enough.
Let's speak dead to it more.
Okay. How about that? All right, the first couple of policies are mostly updates to pronouns. We have the green section. This is only first reading, so if my fellow board members get opportunity to read these policies, if they have some recommendations or some comments or some suggestions, please bring it back to us. One policy, let me pull it up. Policy 6325, consumer and federal grants. And that's, we putting a revision on there when required by federal program legislation at all of them. Then it got a couple of additional words, but basically just changing the verbiage of the words in that policy. The policy I want to bring up is talking about service dogs or working dogs. And that is policy. 8390. 8390, we're actually adding a section to that when it deals with working dogs, dogs that are utilized on school properties for, I'm gonna pull it up, I want to make sure the reading is correct.
Animals, that's our dogs.
Animals, yeah, working animals. Thank you, sir. And as animal, it does include anything that's not a human. So we got emotional support animals, therapy dog, and then we also have that portion we added was the... Working dog.
Service dog.
Service dog, thank you. And that's the one that helps out with, is that right? And you can read the policy, basically it just states certain documentation needs to be utilized to make sure that dog is, or that animal can be on these properties. We also put something in with service dogs and working dogs to help out with doing jobs on site such as geese patrol, things of that nature, bomb control, drug control, weapons control, and basically identifier. So please read over these policies, like I said, this is first reading. Anybody got any questions, if they, I know they got in their packets, such as the website stuff?
How many of the policies are federal or state mandates and have no option with approving or not approving them?
Well, most of these policies are mandatory.
Okay.
Yeah. They removed three of them.
Those three was for...
That were optional? They're all under technology, we're giving them to Mr. Samuel to look over.
Right.
But those aren't in the...
They're not in the packet tonight.
Yeah, all the optional ones were removed.
Yeah, we moved the optional ones to get some more clarity on those items. But these here are all revision, they are mandatory, and they all require. Now, we do have some choices in here for optional checks, if we want to do this or not, some things we took out, some things we didn't, we strike through them. So like I'm saying to my fellow board members, read through them, I mean, it's a lot of reading, it's something to get you to sleep at night, but read through those policies. It's the truth, it's the truth, I went to sleep last night.
It was a long meeting.
Yeah, can't get better reading than this. Any questions?
Chair would entertain a motion for the reading of the first, first reading of the policies, twenty-six, twenty-three, sixty-three, twenty-five, eighty-four-hundred, eighty-three ninety, seventy-five, forty point zero-two, seventy-five, forty point zero-three, seventy-five, forty point zero-four, eighty-three fifteen, sixteen fifteen, thirty-two fifteen, forty-two fifteen.
Mr. President, I move to accept... Dr. McFadden?
Policy fifty-two twelve, policy seventy-four thirty-four, and policy ninety-six, ninety-one sixty.
Mr. President, I move to accept the first reading of all those policies that you just stated.
Support.
Moved by Member McFadden to approve the first reading of the fourteen policies that I mentioned, seconded by Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns?
I just have a correction, you said policy fifty-two twelve, it's policy fifty-five twelve.
That's my dyslexia, you know, reading, so I stand corrected. Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Also, as Chair McFadden say, if there, there are a couple policies, I think you said that we have option of either or or something, if you have any input, let that, let that be known, so the policy committee can look at it when they have meeting before they bring it for final adoption of these policies.
And I, and thinking, Mr. President, I also want to raise your attention, policy seventy-five, forty point zero-two, web accessibility content apps and services, if you get the opportunity to read into that, because it talks a lot about Twitter and TikTok and stuff like that, so you might want to get yourself repped up on that policy. Seventy-five, forty point zero-two.
That was a technology one, though, right?
No, it was inside seventy-five, forty, seventy-five, forty point zero-two.
Says web accessibility content apps and services.
Apps and services. So if you have any comments or suggestions or something you don't like seeing in there, please let the policy committee know about it for me, do our due diligence. That's it.
Any additional questions, comments? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Kahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item ten, open school of choice beginning April twentieth, twenty twenty-three, and ending September eighth, twenty twenty-three. Madam Superintendent.
So we are requesting that the board approve opening the school of choice window beginning tomorrow and ending on September eighth. The school of choice window is, is open as long as you want it, want or need it to be, but it has to close on the first Friday of the first week of school, that means, so that's the September eighth date. We'll also come back before you again in the fall to open school of choice for second semester. This is something the board approves twice a year.
Chair would entertain a motion relative to item ten, open school of choice for the Mount Clemens Community School District beginning April twentieth, twenty twenty-three, and ending September eighth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Second, Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Kahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Item eleven, superintendent search. A, approval of special meeting on September, excuse me, Saturday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-three at nine PM at the Secondary Complex Media Center for initial interviews for the position of superintendent. Item eleven B, approval of special meeting on Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three at six-thirty at the Secondary Complex for the second round of interviews for the position of superintendent.
Saturday at nine AM, not nine PM.
Did I say?
You said PM.
Yep, yep, excuse me, correction. A, approval of special meeting on Saturday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-three at nine AM. And Tuesday, twenty-fifth, at six-thirty PM, both in the Secondary Complex. Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Second, Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Kahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next on the agenda, informational items. Item twelve, business committee. A, any questions regarding the financial reports? It's there.
Oh, it is there.
It's there. Any questions, comments regarding item B, contract listings? Hearing or seeing none, moving on to item thirteen, superintendent's comments.
So, good evening, so first of all, I'd like to answer some of the requests and questions that were asked at last board meeting. One of the questions had to do with what kind of support are we giving the administrator and the teachers in our schools? So all of the administrators have support for mentors. At Seminole, the support was given through a retired elementary principal with eighteen years of principal experience. She was actually also the interim principal at Seminole last spring, we paid a stipend for the support person. At Seminole and at Secondary, they, we have what we call a learning focus partnership. At Seminole, David Lavender and Teresa Hasenauer meet weekly with Ms. Bethel, and they do walkthroughs, they analyze and access the data, they troubleshoot issues at Seminole, and they help organize upcoming events, among many other things. At Secondary, their learning focus partnership is myself and Sarah Scott from Swift, and we also do walkthroughs, we also do some troubleshooting, we also analyze and access data, and we do help her organize upcoming events, and just anything that they need, and that's a weekly meeting and it's an hour. We also have our DTN meetings, which is, which stands for District Turnaround Network Meeting, we meet every Monday from one to three, sometimes they're on Zoom, sometimes they're in person, and so that's an opportunity for our district leadership, our special ed director, the principals are there, Teresa Hasenauer, who is our support for the Regional Assistance Grant, because we're a focused school, and Sarah Scott from Swift, they attend these meetings as well. We discuss, we process issues, we do data analysis, we help organize the weekly, or the bi-weekly PLCs in our schools, we talk about and organize testing, open houses, teacher evaluation, I'm going to ask David if I miss anything to, to kind of step in. So at both Seminole and Secondary, Mr. Lavender and myself were visible in each school, which gives access to the administrators on a just now as needed basis, so we're there if something comes up, we're there, we're also only a phone call away. We help with issues, we troubleshoot, we also use that time to talk to the principal if we hear some things that may, they might not know about, and then we help them process that. The teachers, we, every single teacher has a mentor teacher, every new teacher within the district has a mentor teacher, and they have a mentor teacher for the first four years that they're with us. We also, this year I brought in the, that former elementary principal to work with our brand new teachers, because we had so many of them, and it was a lot for our two new principals, so I brought in Sherry Michaelworth, and she also worked with the brand new teachers that were here, many of them, this was their first year teaching, so she was a big support for them, just when they just have a question about something and they need an answer right away, or they need to talk through some things. Let's see. Another question, did anyone ask Shirley Monk why she left? The answer is yes, we did have conversations with Mrs. Monk. Are exit interviews being done? Yes, all staff who have left the district in the past two years have had an exit interview opportunity, most have complied, I would say we have much better than a ninety percent return rate. Mr. Lavender, do you? It's around there, so. Who attended Heritage Night to make their community a part of their time? A lot of, that was a question by Mrs. Cohna, and a lot of members of the audience and board said yes, there were a lot of hands that was raised. Heritage Night was a great night, we all had a good time. Then this one is kind of, have you ever argued with yourself? I do all the time. So the next question was, where do I find the strategic plan for the district? There isn't one, there isn't one at this time, and I would hope that this would be a first priority as you bring in a new superintendent. Mr. Rickman and I have talked about starting and organizing a strategic plan, but there was, it's honestly, there's been so much going on that we haven't, I'm thinking a new leader, a new superintendent, we've got a pretty new board here, it, now is the time to do it. How are you trying to reengage families who have left the district? Well, one way is we have open houses tomorrow night at six PM. Please come and tour our wonderful Secondary Campus, meet our staff, and look over our options for students. We also have that yearly back-to-school bash, which everyone looks forward to. We also try to hire Mount Clemens graduates and community members as much as we can, and this, I think, has helped engage the community and to bring more students to our schools. We are also doing things to reengage families and bring students back. We've increased academic programming here at Secondary, including CTE programs and more elective classes for kids. We have dance, we have culinary, we have HVAC class, we have holistic health, we also have advanced placement English, and we are a pilot program for advanced placement African American Studies. We are one of twenty districts in the state of Michigan, and we will be offering that class for twenty-three, twenty-four school year, I'm really excited about that one for the kids. Additional athletic opportunities with a push for middle school athletics includes track, wrestling, basketball, dance team, cheerleading, volleyball. Extracurricular enrichment programs are esports, the geek club, and music production. Dinner and buses for students involved in after-school programming is, is provided, we also have after-school programming at Seminole, we have tutoring and dinner and buses is also provided for our Seminole kids. Increased social media presence, our district open house, with busing for families to and from the school, a dinner and showcasing our new programs. But I think that the most important reason and the thing about our schools to help reengage the families is, we know you, and you know us, we know our kids, you know the teachers here, and you know that we care, and we, I really feel that we make a difference for our kids that are here. I would like to also thank our dance team for coming tonight, we had a really nice turnout for them, and the Seminole Equity Team has done a lot of work, a lot of positive, wonderful things over at Seminole, so I want to make sure I thank them as well. On the legislative issue, there's a lot going down in Lansing, so Mr. Rickman, will I be stealing your thunder if I say a few things?
No, because the county legislative committee meeting was the same time we have our workshop.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so, excuse me, let me... Pardon me, so the House bill that will be acted on probably tomorrow is the one that removes, it's House Bill forty-two thirty-three, and it removes the prohibition of labor organizations' assistance in collecting dues from public school employees, so that one will be voted on tomorrow, so that's one to pay attention to. So in the past, just to give you a little history for that, I don't remember when it happened, but districts forever used to collect union dues for their teachers, and then there was a law passed that we could no longer do that, and this will reverse that law, so we'll be able to collect union dues for the union. There's four other bills having to do with collective bargaining that will probably be looked at in the next week or two, a lot of them have to do with prohibitive subjects of bargaining and removing those prohibitive subjects, so. And that is the end of my superintendent comments, any questions? Is that a good place to put, do you think, the, responding to citizens' comments, or should it be a separate place on the agenda, whatever you choose?
We'll work on that.
Yeah, just take a look at that.
Any questions on superintendent? Next, item fourteen, committee reports, anything to report from the Business and Finance Committee, Ms. Collins?
No.
Questions at the chair? Mr. Leningberry, no report from the community, Community Coalition and Educational Foundation. Thank you, sir. Ms. O'Neal, any information from the Curriculum Personnel Committee?
I will turn that over to Mr. Lavender. Yeah.
Always great.
So, yeah.
Great meeting, but nothing to add, okay, all right. Doc, you've already talked about policy, so.
Yep.
Again, if you have any questions, input on the policies, get it to the committee so they can have it for the meeting before they bring the second reading for adoption. There's no legislative report because of conflicts with our work session date. Which brings us to item fifteen, board comments. Ms. O'Neal?
I want to also say congratulations to the cheerleading team and the dance team, they did, they really did do an excellent job this year, and I look forward to next year. So, and also, the Equity Club or?
Team.
Team, yeah, that's what it is, team over at Seminole, congratulations to them, I did hear some good things that were going on over there. And I also, I think, want to say, I honor the, everybody that had something to say. I hear their concerns, and I do believe that there are a lot of people that are concerned about our district, for the most part, I believe that they are really concerned for our district, and I do appreciate that. But oftentimes, I really have a hard time being beat up for things that I don't know, for things that they say that our name is on, and we really don't know anything about it. That's just one thing that I kind of have a hard time with, but I do maybe, I really like the fact that we are addressing some questions the following meeting. So, yeah, I think that's all of my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neal. Mr. Walker?
Congratulations to the cheerleading squad and the Seminole Equity Team, you guys do a lot of great work, and seniors, get ready for prom and senior activities, gonna miss, miss it a year from now, so suck it all in. miss, miss it a year from now, so suck it all in. And thank the audience for their comments. We hear you. We hear it. We hear you every single meeting, and just have a great day. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Ms. Walker?
Okay, I too want to congratulate the dance and cheer team. Outstanding. They did an awesome job. And also the equity team at Seminole. Kudos to you as well. And I too want to let everybody know that made a comment that we heard everything you said. And I go home at night and it all soaks in when I get at home. So know that it didn't fall on deaf ears. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Ms. Collins?
I also want to congratulate our cheer team. If you guys haven't been out to see them, they're fantastic, and they will get the crowd going more than you could ever imagine. We've had some really fun times and laughs watching them. They're absolutely fantastic. I, like trustee O'Neill said, am a little bit frustrated getting blasted from the public in their comments. We do a lot, and personnel matters are not something we're going to sit here and discuss, and personnel matters are not something I am going to discuss with anyone outside of being an administrator. It's not appropriate to do that. It's not good business practice. We hear you. Those that have reached out to me personally, I have spoken to, and I do reach back out to them. I don't ignore anyone. If anyone feels ignored, you should reach out, because you haven't. I'm in the business right now of providing for our kids. I'm excited about our H VAC program. It's fantastic. Be here tomorrow night. Come see the classroom. Come speak to Pastor Ireland. It's going to be an excellent program. It's a great opportunity for these kids. We've sat in athletic meetings. I'm extremely excited that we have middle school sports coming back. That has been on my agenda since I got on this board. So I, I'm very, very excited to see that happening. There are great things happening here. We have a lot to offer our kids. We have more coming. And say more positive things about our, our kids and our district, please. Nobody's doing that enough.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Ms. Walker?
That's all right.
Dr. McFadden?
Thank you, sir. First, I want to congrats, or give congratulations to Carolyn Trailer and her dance team. I mean, they did amazing stuff this year. Similar activity team, definitely reach out and say, congratulations to them. Also want to say, I want to thank the community for their voice, for their feedback, for their feed forward, and also for their district support. Even though they might have been a little upset or a little, a little aggressive with it, they are supporting the district because they can voice their opinion. So I, I know the community loved this district. For if they didn't, they would not have stepped up, and even not have gave a voice. Discovery is underway. So I want to say is just, please let the process work. Please try to be patient. Also want to bring to the community's attention about our C T E programs with H VAC. I talked to Mr. Ireland today, Pastor Ireland, and the H VAC program is very exciting. I mean, there's some, some other programs he mentioned to me today that was, I can't wait to see if it comes to life. So that is amazing. So I hope that takes place. Also, I will be attending the Spring Institute at the end of the month, April twentieth, twenty-ninth. I'll be going into some Michigan Association School Board classes for training on budget anatomy and shortfalls, advanced school law, and understanding assessments. So I just want to keep my foot to the pedal with that one. I was trying to get Dante to come along, but nothing yet, nothing yet. I'll get him there soon. Mr. President, those are my comments.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. One thing I've learned in the years serving on this board, that when you're an elected official, you have to have thick skin. You're often ostracized, ridiculed for decisions you make. But we do it as a collective body of seven. I'm not a dictator. I don't put thoughts in my colleagues' heads. Everybody is independent thinkers. But as I'm the president, I, I catch the blame for matters that this board deals with or doesn't deal with. Jump on the comments that Ms. Collins made. Many of the comments tonight were of a personnel matter issue, and this board does not deal with personnel matters in the form that we were talked about and thinking that we're not taking action, and the action that we're taking are against black employees. I would like to give kudos to Ms. Trailer and Dance and Cheer Team. If you've ever, if you saw them perform during the basketball games, that was the highlight of the game. The two cheerleading teams and dance teams battling each other. It, it was quite a sight to see, and if you didn't know any better, you'd have thought that these young ladies and these young men that were cheerleaders in the dance team, you thought they were going to be fighting because they had dance off. I mean, they're doing multiple somersaults and flips and stuff, and it was, it was a better show than the athletic event going on in itself. So they are a tremendous asset, and all of those students were academically eligible for the whole season. So they are truly student athletes, and kudos to Ms. Trailer for ensuring that those students were students first and athletes second. Kudos to Larry Ireland for leading the H VAC classes. That's something very exciting that we only have here in the Mount Clemens Community School District. Students can be enrolled in this, these classes, and upon receiving a high school diploma, you probably can walk into the industry making a, a good living, because everybody, you know, H VAC, if you ever see commercials about Northwest Tech and all these other companies, institutions that are doing it, we're doing the same thing. And you can walk out of high school and literally walk into a great paying job that have you a lifetime vocation, if that's what you choose to do. I'd like to wish good luck to the Boys and Girls Bathers Track Team, and also the middle, middle school track team under the leadership of Coach Wallace. I'd like to announce that the community is invited to be in the audience during the first round of interviews for the superintendent position on this Saturday, beginning at nine o'clock. And the audience, the community is also invited to be a part or be in the audience for the second round of interviews that, that will occur on Tuesday, April the twenty-fifth, at six-thirty P M. You can be involved in the, in the process via a Google process that will be available for those that are here on site. Although you're not, you won't be, the audience will not be involved in asking questions of the candidates, there will be a portion of the meeting that the community that's present, I understand the community that's present during the interviews, they can have input via a Google process that I'm not aware of how it works, because I'm not that technology person, but that will be available on Saturday and Tuesday for some kind of input and feedback from the audience that, the community members and all that are in the audience here on Saturday and next Tuesday. I, we heard a lot of comments from, from citizens, and I, I welcome them, even though, you know, my colleagues have said they get beat, beat up. It, I, it's part of being an elected official. But again, I have tough skin. We have tough skin. And, thank you, Doc. I'd like to play special kudos to Azia Wallace. She was recognized and honored in a county-wide, I think it's for academics and athletics. So she's an outstanding student athlete. Understand, she's intending on going to the University of Kentucky to join her sister that I think will still be at University of Kentucky on the track team. So congratulations to Azia, and both to her mother and her father for doing an outstanding job in, in providing the leadership and the mentorship of a great student athlete that represents the Mount Clemens Community School District in the highest regards. Those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Seconded by Member Walker. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Sonia?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Meeting's adjourned at nine o'clock in the A M., P M. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate your time, energy.